Vice Mayor has our prayer and pledge. Mr. Bratcher.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask everyone, please bow with me for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to Murfreesboro City Council, June 3, 2010. My how time flies. We have an announcement today, and what we're trying to do is to alert as many persons as possible to a public meeting about the city's plan for its upcoming North Murfreesboro drainage study, and that will be held at Armistick Elementary School on West Thompson Lane, June 15, from 5 until 7 p.m. The meeting is going to offer an opportunity for the public to provide information about the study area, and the area is generally located on both sides of Memorial Boulevard, from Thompson Lane due south to Haynes Drive and the Dejarnet area. So if you think about it, it's down to VA Hospital over to the high school, south down Memorial, all the way to Haynes Drive, the Dejarnet-Haynes Drive intersection, and the areas on both sides of Memorial, one going Haynes toward Thompson and one going Dejarnet toward Las Cassas. The city's planning and engineering officials will be on hand during that open house on June 15. There will be no formal presentations made. Huddleston Steel Engineering is conducting the study, and it will be funded from the city's stormwater user fees. I know many of you who receive a bill from the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department notice every month a $3.25 fee for the purposes of stormwater, and that's why we're looking at this North Murfreesboro drainage area. So I hope everyone will get an opportunity to attend June 15, and next week when we meet again, I'll make that announcement again. But if you have an interest or want to talk to someone about this area and where it is specifically, you can see the city's website, or you can call 893-6441. The city's planning and engineering department asked for someone who could tell you about our North Murfreesboro drainage study. I appreciate everyone paying attention to that, and we'll try to get as much input as possible regarding that. Council members, you have before you your consent agenda. If you've had an opportunity to review that consent agenda, I'll accept a motion unless there are questions.
Here now, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance amending Murfreesboro City Code, Appendix C, City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, Employees' Revised Pension Trust Agreement, Section 1.08, 1.12, and 2.01, dealing with barring officers and employees employed on or after July 1, 2010, from participation in it.
Move for passage on third reading.
Motion, second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. We'll consider for passage now on second reading an ordinance amending Chapter 33 Waters and Sewers of the Murfreesboro City Code, dealing with the minimum monthly water charges and minimum monthly sewer charges. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, and second. Any questions on this second reading? If not, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. We'll consider now for passage on second reading an ordinance amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 4, Alcoholic Beverages, Section 4-90, Chapter 13, Food and Food Products, Section 13-1, Chapter 28, Streets and Sidewalks, Section 28-14, dealing with meal and beverage service on city sidewalks.
Mayor.
Yes.
Before I make a motion to approve this on second reading, I'd like to remind the council what this is. This is an ordinance that will allow outside dining on restaurants on the square. Their season is very short. If we pass this on third reading at our next meeting, it's 15 days before the ordinance can be put into effect. I would like to ask the council to, I don't know the correct words, Ms. McGinnis, so help me, to make this where they could immediately start their businesses on the sidewalks with the approval of the application committee, simply because that their season is so short. It will probably be July before they can actually implement this. So I'm not exactly sure how to do it, but I think we need to do it.
Let's ask our city attorney.
You can, with a two-thirds vote, declare that an ordinance becomes effective immediately upon its passage on third and final reading if you declare that an emergency is present. So if you wish to make such a declaration, I would suggest a motion to amend Section 4 by deleting the phrase "15 days" and substituting immediately for that phrase "an emergency" and the public welfare and the work of the city requiring it.
So it would go into effect two weeks before we pass it on third reading?
No, it would go into effect the day we pass it on third.
But in essence, it's 15 days earlier.
Soon as we have our last minute.
It's just 15 days.
But considering the shortness of the season.
So would you like to make that amendment?
I would. Another factor is weather. If it's raining, they've lost another weekend. With the many activities on the square, it's an opportunity to increase revenues, increase participation, and ambience on the square. So if we considered the season was three months, then we lost 15 days, what percentage of that is of the season? So would that not warrant a, quote, "emergency"?
One-six.
One-six, eighteen and two-thirds percent?
I don't think you need to make a declaration as to a percentage before deciding whether you wish to take effect immediately.
I'll second the amendment.
And then you have to vote on whether we have an emergency or not?
You would just vote on making the amendment. By voting on the amendment, you'd be declaring that an emergency calls for it to take effect immediately upon its passage on third and final reading, and then vote on the ordinance as amended.
All right, so you have an amendment which has been proposed to this ordinance, and you have a second. Is there any question on what the amendment would do? If not, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. And now, would you, is there a motion on second reading as amended to this particular ordinance amending City Code, Chapter 4, Chapter 13, and Chapter 28?
So moved. Second.
Motion, and second. Is there any question on this, now second reading as amended? If not, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the city engineer with regards to Haynes Drive improvements. Mr. Griffith, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, and members of the city council. I do have before you tonight one item, as regarding the Haynes Drive improvements. Just to familiarize yourself with this project, the engineering department staff is recommending, actually, two phases of work to occur on Haynes Drive. One phase is actually the repaving of Haynes Drive from Wiltshire back to Memorial. Obviously, it's, just anyone driving down it can see it's in poor condition, and the street department is proposing to repave the entire section of the roadway as part of their 2010 to 2011 street maintenance program. The second portion of the, second phase of the project deals specifically with an area between Regency Park Drive and Sulphur Springs Road. As we mentioned previously, Haynes Drive is currently signed at 30 miles per hour. Our proposed improvements to each curve there in that section would bring both to a 30 mile per hour minimum design according to ASHTO standards. Since our meeting on May the 6th, we've pulled accident reports from 2007 through 2009. Both the engineering and transportation departments have received complaints from the public and police department regarding accidents in relatively short stretch of roadway between Regency Park and Sulphur Springs. Between 2007 and 2009, there have been 65 crashes documented with accident reports on Haynes Drive. In total, more than 60% of all of the accidents which occurred in 2007 and in 2009 on Haynes Drive took place in this back-to-back curve section. It's interesting to note, there's been some speculation as far as the cause of those accidents. I have included in your information crash diagrams that was obtained from the police There has been some information, or I guess some misinformation, that many of these accidents were caused possibly by drug or alcohol abuse. We noted in the police reports that of the 36 accidents that actually occurred in this section of roadway, only three were possibly related to drug or alcohol abuse, according to the police reports. As I mentioned, a map indicating the accidents has been included in your information. A review of the current conditions by our consultant, Huddleston Steel, indicates there's currently no significant superelevation in the back-to-back curves. Based on the likely superelevation and the small existing radi for each one, the curve's current design speed is less than 15 miles per hour. Therefore, staff is recommending improving both radius, both radius and adding superelevation to each curve. Basically, we'll add a 3.5% cross slope and improve the, improve the radiuses to 565 feet. Accident analysis also indicates that we're getting rear-end collisions at Regency Park Drive. Therefore, we also recommend extending the existing turn lane at Sulphur Springs to include Regency Park Drive. This will effectively give us a center turn lane from Sulphur Springs back to Regency Park, and will give the many residents there in the Regency Park subdivision a safer area to wait while turning left. Staff also recommends adding two-foot shoulders through the curves to help avoid driver drop-offs, which can lead to overcorrections and accidents. And we finally recommend a thicker pavement section. It's well noted that additional wear occurs in curve areas, and we would like to thicken the asphalt up to help some of the rutting that's occurring there now. We do not propose to add any curb and gutter or sidewalk with these improvements at this time. Any further modifications to Haynes Drive from Memorial to Wiltshire should be further studied, and any recommendations derived is a function of the city's major thoroughfare plan update process. I have before you here, and I apologize, it's a poor choice in colors, but basically the limits of the improvements, the green area. Matter of fact, I'm going to step around. Basically, in between the areas I have marked there is where we're actually planning to do some improvements to the roadway, improve those two curves. The entire rest of the section noted in green would just be strictly a repaving project at this time. And as I mentioned previously, any further improvements would be a part of the major thoroughfare plan. The repaving of Haynes Drive from Wiltshire to Memorial is estimated at $300,000. It would be funded through our maintenance program by State Street Aid. Our current estimate to complete the proposed improvements that I have marked on the map from Regency Park to Sulphur Springs is $400,000, and that would be paid through the TML loan. I might add, obviously, that's a bid, a bid project, so that may vary based off of what our actual bid opening says. On Monday, May 17, staff held a neighborhood meeting at Segal Elementary, as requested by the city council in your meeting on May 6. Notices were sent to the contiguous property owners, who actually extended a little bit outside the blue area there, since that was where the majority of the work was occurring. The meeting was also advertised on the city's website, cable TV channel, and local newspaper. At the meeting, each attendee had opportunity to review the information regarding Haynes Drive, as well as the plans for the proposed improvement, proposed improvements. A presentation was given to the attendees to provide an overview of the information and reasoning behind the improvements. We then held a question-and-answer session, and then after the completion of the question-and-answer session, each attendee was again encouraged to fill out a document sheet about the project, or fill out a comment sheet, I'm sorry, about the project. Once again, the attendees were given opportunity to meet with city staff and our consultant individually to answer any remaining questions. In total, we had 53 people sign in. Some of those were staff and council meeting, or council members. Obviously, on any public meeting, you'll fail to get 100% of sign-in, but we did try to encourage folks to do that. And we also had 18 comment sheets that were completed regarding the project. We've attached all the comment sheets that we received at our office in your package for your review. Seven of the residents who filled out comment sheets opposed proposed improvements for one reason or another, due mainly to the fact that they felt superelevating the curves and extending the turn lane would encourage higher speeds on the roadway. Included below are some of the residents' proposed alternate improvements and staff's response. We had several residents that recommended installing a three-way stop sign at either one or both intersections. Staff does not recommend installing a three-way stop sign in either location. The high volume of traffic, which our most recent count shows about 9,300 cars a day, average daily traffic, travel the roadway, would significantly increase congestion at both locations, as well as increasing both air and noise pollution to the immediately adjacent residents. One of the other items was installing a traffic signal at Sulphur Springs and Haynes Drive. Well, we don't believe that this time a traffic signal is warranted. We do recommend a signal study should be completed as part of any, as part of any long-term improvements recommended by the major thoroughfare plan. If the study indicates a signal is warranted, it should be installed as part of the long-term improvements. Installing guardrail was another recommendation along the existing curves. Guardrails typically used to lessen the severity of accidents. It usually doesn't do a very good job in actually preventing them. In addition, the presence of guardrail could create sight distance problem for the multiple side streets and private drives. We also note that you'd have so many gaps in the guardrails due to the driveways that would really make it ineffective. Couple of the residents also did support extending the turn lane to Regency Park Drive. We looked at that very closely, but due to the significant left turns to Regency Park and its entrance proximity to the curve, and the number of rear-end collisions that our traffic reports showed at that location, we recommend that its inclusion will improve the safety of the intersection and its operation. Staff has requested, obviously, one of the big things that we got out of the meeting was speeding on Haynes Drive. As I mentioned previously, it's currently signed at 30 miles per hour. Staff has requested, and the police department has indicated that we'll increase enforcement along Haynes Drive to help deter speeding. In addition, any design of any long-term improvements recommended through the major thoroughfare plan should further consider engineered methods to control speeding while still maintaining its functional use. Based on the information that we've provided tonight, staff recommends proceeding with the proposed improvements to the Regency Park and Sulphur Springs area, and then we would do that by advertising the project for bid just in the Regency Park and Sulphur Springs area, and the repaving, as I mentioned previously, would occur from Wiltshire to Memorial using the annual paving contract. If you do recommend proceeding with the project, we do have about five properties, about three tenths of an acre, either in right-of-way or easements that we would need to purchase. I've given you a table showing those, and we would recommend purchasing those, or purchasing the amount of right-of-way and easements required is outlined in your information I've provided. With that, I appreciate you indulging my long presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Griffith?
Mayor, I have a couple.
Mr. Gilli.
The traffic counter, where was it placed in relationship to the proposed project, Chris?
Then did you have the actual location?
We've recently gone back and done some recounts, and the traffic counters, we put actually two on both sides of Sulphur Springs Road, one being between Regency Park Drive, I think in Ravenwood, to the immediate east of Sulphur Springs and Haynes intersection. And I believe the other one was between Sulphur Springs and Regency Wood Drive.
Chris, the other question I have is, as long as Haynes Drive has been configured as it is, is there any real harm in trying just the repaving and the stop sign approach as opposed to going the route that was being proposed?
I think there would be a harm as far as the, mentioning the letter, I think the congestion, just on the number, just the volume of cars that enter that intersection. We've really not found it, a stop sign or a three-way stop sign to be very effective. We've got quite a bit of experience with using stop signs for traffic control, and just really, I think that, I think you'd see so much congestion, and as I mentioned, it would really increase the noise pollution and the air pollution for the residents that live immediately adjacent to the area.
The next question I got for you, we got a letter this evening from some of the residents in the area that states that they would live with the recommended improvements with the exception of the Regency turn lane. Explain to me why you think that that's, why that compromise can't be reached?
We looked hard at that, Mr. Gilli. We really felt like, we felt like with just the number of, and really, that serves, is the main entrance for a lot of the Regency Park subdivision there, and just the large number of left turns, and specifically, we saw a lot of the accidents that occurred in that, the first curve that was nearest to Regency Park. So we felt like that we were seeing some congestion problems there that was causing the accidents, and then also the number of rear-end accidents that were occurring actually going into Regency Park. So we felt, we looked at it, really strongly considered it, but with the accident data that we had, both the rear-end collisions and the number of cars leaving the road after the curve that's immediately adjacent to the Regency Park Drive, we felt like that its inclusion in the project was critical.
Other questions?
Yes, I have a couple.
Ms. Gales Harris.
I'm new to this project. I understand when I, we first started talking about it a couple of meetings ago, we were saying that it had come up before the council before, and can you bring me up to date on what happened then?
I'm not.
I think this, and maybe I'm just confused, I have to apologize. I think what we mentioned when we had the meeting before, all of this came up before, and we decided to let the residents come in and comment. I'm a little confused, I guess.
Back in October.
No, back, okay.
Back in October.
Back in October.
That's where she's going.
Okay, I'm sorry. This project dates all the way back to April of 2005, when the council approved a design contract for basically a three-lane facility with curbs and gutters all the way from Memorial all the way towards Thompson, and we got aways with that and then put the project on hold. But picking back up, we did bring the project before the council in, I believe it was in October of 2009, and at that time, I believe Mr. Gilli had asked for us to get with the public and to look at, as far as getting some information out. We got with some of the folks that, the department actually reached some of the folks that were immediately adjacent to the project, and really focused more on the five that we're actually buying property from, since we felt like that those were the most impacted. And at the same time, we provided a memo to Mr. Lyons regarding the project, and kind of chronology, gave some chronology to the events that leading up to it, as far as, as I mentioned previously, the, you know, the three-lane section going with the, and even at one time moving forward with bike lanes on it. At that time, we provided that information, and then we didn't bring it back up again until the last meeting, I believe, that you were attending.
Okay, thank you for bringing me up today on that. Due to the economy today, do you think, would this be a tremendous saving if we can do a, make possibly a win-win situation, do everything right now but the turn-in lane, economically, without the turn-in lane right now? I think it's a project, we said maybe five-year project or something, and maybe later on, look at that.
I would be hesitant with that, Ms. Harris, just because it's a, it is a relatively small project, as far as projects we typically do, and the fact that we have, we've been notified of an area that needs improvement in safety, we have accident concerns, both from residents and from the police department, given the fact that we... police department, given the fact that we, and the street needs repaving and something needs to be, to be done with it. I, I think once we're put on notice and once we come up with a design and, and then show that we have a funding source, I think it becomes our responsibility then to, to move on that.
And even as a trial, we don't see possibly putting one-stop sign up just to see how things go that way?
Yeah. Mr. Richardson could probably, he's, I've got quite a bit of experience with, with stop signs. I, I, I know they, they gain effectiveness up to a certain point as far as with the volume of traffic, but I can't, and Mr. Richardson can correct me if I'm wrong, but I can't think of any minor arterial in the city that were, with this volume of traffic that we've, that we've even entertained the ideal of, of a stop sign. I, I, I think it would just really, it, it would really just break down the traffic flow through that area and, and would be far more detrimental to, with congestion than what it would be as far as any type of speed control.
So the whole project, the reason for all of this is the fact that people are speeding too much on Haynes? Is that?
No, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't agree with that.
I mean, I'm just trying to understand.
Oh, yeah, I, I'm sorry.
I'm coming in new, I just, I'm trying to get the overall picture.
Sure, no, I, I, I think we have, we have documented information from our consultant that the, that the back-to-back curves at, at Regency and Sulphur Springs both are, are not to today's current standards. They're, they're essentially less than a 15 mile an hour design speed. Most of our even subdivision streets are, are signed at 30 miles per hour. And so we're basically just trying to get it up to a, to, to today's standards to, to a 30 mile an hour design speed.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions or comments?
Just a couple, Mayor.
Mr. Gilli.
Chris, you mentioned that stop signs are effective up to a point, but at this point in time, we haven't tried that approach, so we don't know how effective or not effective that approach would be in this scenario. And I, I tend to lean more toward doing everything but the turn-in lane because all those would be improvements to the road and then trying the stop sign approach and seeing how productive or unproductive that is, considering that isn't a change to the current circumstances.
And I certainly, I appreciate your views on, on many things and including that, but I, I really think just the, the volume of traffic, I guess you have to go with, not only with engineering judgment, but just really just based off of not necessarily past experience in our area, but, you know, past experience throughout the, throughout the city, throughout the state, that I, I just don't feel that, or I don't think that.
Let me, let me ask you something, kind of piggybacking on that. Where are you suggesting a stop sign?
The two locations, Chris, that, that were suggested at the public meeting were, can you give me, give us specifically?
It would be, it would be at each T intersection, the one at, at Sulphur Springs Road, and then it would also be at the, basically at, at Regency Park Drive.
The primary one that was requested, I believe, though, was the Sulphur Springs intersection, is that correct?
Uh, yes.
If you were ranking, ordering those two, it would be the Sulphur Springs?
Yes, that's correct, yes. I would think that the Sulphur Springs Road, it certainly has a higher volume of traffic and.
Do we know what the traffic count is on Sulphur Springs? I'll give you a minute to look at that. And do we know what the traffic count is on Regency Park? And if we're looking at 6,500 to 6,800 traffic movements and in one year we had 26 accidents, one year we had 14 accidents, and one year we had 25 accidents, on the whole stretch of Haynes Drive, is a stop sign going to stop accidents? And that's a pretty small number. I, I, I think if we're looking to get voter turnout in our elections and we put a stop sign or two stop signs on Haynes Drive, I think we're going to get some more voter turnout.
Mayor, please.
Mr. Young.
Mr. Griffin, if you put a stop sign at Sulphur Springs Road.
You already got one there now.
I, I know, but. But on Haynes Drive at Sulphur Springs Road and let's say Regency Park, would not the stacking or the queuing early in the morning from the kids going to school make it, one, extremely long time to get through those intersections? And two, wouldn't it be a hardship on those houses with those cars running in front of their houses, the air pollution and the noise, noise pollution in front of those houses?
It, it would. I have worked with, with CMAC, which is basically congestion mitigation, air quality, which, that, that's the number one goal of that program, is to move cars through an area and, and basically prevent them from stopping, idling and, and lifting or giving off the exhaust. Not to mention just the, the amount of noise pollution that it would, would occur with the, the cars there, idling at that position, or at that, that location. It would be a, I don't have anything to back this up, but it wouldn't surprise me at all if, if, if they would, the line would extend back to, back to Memorial and back to Thompson the other way.
And Mr. Griffin, I think a big concern, I get it, and I put this as a question, that if we had a, two stop signs at Sulphur Springs coming from Regionwood Drive, it's very conceivable that that, that, that could back up all the way to Regionwood Drive, which is a major egress for Regency Park.
Well, and, and you're exactly right. It really, it doesn't, it stops, you know, put aside the effects it has on Haynes Drive, but all the heck, all the, the effects it has on all the side streets that actually connect to Haynes Drive. I mean, you start backing up cars into, to neighborhoods, you start really just crippling, and you can see by the map there, I mean, just look at the, the number of single-family lots that's in there. It's a, it's classified as a, as a minor arterial and, and a big reason for that is the number of residents that, that depend on it to, to leave the area. And I think that you would, I think you would severely hurt their ability to, to get anywhere in a timely manner. And of course, we're, I know there's some discussion, obviously with any location, the peaks or any residential location, the peaks that we're looking at in the morning and the afternoon, you would see, you wouldn't see the same sort of, of problems in, during, during the midday.
In the traffic count, we feel fairly confident it's going to be somewhere in the 6,000 cars a day range.
Actually, 9,300.
9,300.
I'm sorry, I may have mispoke, there is 9,300.
Was our recent traffic count.
Yes.
Do we have any other 9,300 streets, 9,300 cars a day in the city that we have stop signs on?
Not to my knowledge, I don't know. Mr. Richardson, do you?
I, I don't know that we specifically looked at that, we'd be glad to do it. I, I can't think of offhand any minor arterial roadways, especially with that, that have the peaking characteristics as this would with the residential that we would have stop signs on. The only thing that would reasonably come to mind is possibly Clark Boulevard and Hamilton, where there's a four-way stop sign that has a, it's not a minor arterial street, but it has a, probably comparable traffic volume to it and that doesn't work real well either. And I'd like to say one more thing about this, with the stop signs and so forth. In putting up multi-way stop signs, we have to go through the exact same warranting procedure as we would put the signal. We're not allowed to just go put up a stop sign anywhere we want to. And just like a traffic signal, we go through a warranting analysis in doing that and have to meet the same general type requirements. And I'd also say that there's, there's some real characteristic differences between the operations of stop signs, say even versus signals. Traffic signals are more appropriate in higher volumes for the simple fact that on the traffic signals, fully actuated signals, the main line flows unless somebody is on the side street. I'll contrast that to a stop sign, that the 9,000-plus vehicles that would go down the road at any given time have to stop each and every time, whether there's anybody on the side streets or not. And that relates back to the question that you were answering, or asking on the volumes and so forth. That would be true for Regency Park Drive, which has in the neighborhood of a couple thousand, I think, vehicles a day. Sulphur Springs Road, probably in the neighborhood of 7,000. That was, that was from my 2007 count map. My 2009 I printed out, I printed it so small I couldn't read the numbers, so. But I think we're, we're, we're possibly in that neighborhood and I think you can probably understand what I'm saying is that all the people that will go down Haynes Drive would have to stop at both intersections, both times and many times for absolutely no good cause. And the congestion, congestion out there for that would be horrific. It's not a good option to use in this situation. The unintended consequences, I guarantee you this, of doing that would be that that small area would become so congested that all the traffic that used Haynes Drive would be filtered back through all the side residential streets to try to avoid it. That would certainly have to be happening.
Turning on Regency Park, going around trying to get through Buckle or Goran.
Absolutely.
Trying to through Battleground or somewhere else.
On both sides of that isolated area, that would happen, whether it be Tedders and down the side street, Ravenwood on the other side. But, you know, human nature is not sit blind for 25 cars when I hit a side street and avoid that. So, and, so I, I think that we're pretty much agreeable staff-wise that that would be probably a poor solution to addressing what we're looking at.
And, and real quick, because I didn't see that information in our, what I read, so the, the recent traffic count that we did, the last two, we, that came in at 9,300.
Yes.
And we had, what did we anticipate? Because I think we talked about it our last meeting, we thought that it was 6,000 to 7,000.
6,800 or something like that, 67, 6800.
Oh.
And actually, if I recall correctly, when we looked at making the complete improvement across that neighborhood, at the same time, we were doing Dejarnte Lane on the other side. One of the reasons that I felt like we shouldn't go ahead with that project at that time was that the traffic count was not anticipated to grow based on what I heard from transportation folks, that it was going to be around 7,000, it was going to stay that way because the neighborhood was going to stay that way. Now we have evidence that the 7,000 count in 2007, at least on one day or five days or however many days you counted, is now 9,300.
Right, so we've gone a 30%.
So to me, I mean, you pretty well lost the reason why you didn't need to, to improve it back then, which was you weren't going to get any more cars on the road. Everybody, if it was driving on it, it was already driving on it, you weren't going to get any new traffic. So, I mean, and one of the reasons we improved Dejarnte was because we anticipated more traffic across Dejarnte, we wanted to make it safer. And that's, I'm afraid, is what we see here.
And, and something I was telling someone, it just so happened, a good friend of mine yesterday called me and I think if we check our police report, that we had an 18-wheeler on Haynes Drive and knocked down one of the power lines yesterday. That, that basically, and I, we don't even, we don't even try to allow 18-wheelers or service trucks on that road, do we?
They're, they're prohibited by ordinance, the only street in Murkisburg.
That's worked, didn't it?
Well, and, and having dealt with this for years, I think that that has been greatly reduced. Obviously, people still do what people do. We, you know, have alerted the police department, they're aware they're not supposed to be there. And also certainly back during the construction time, part of the ordinance read that the prohibit, prohibition did not include people that were doing business on drive or contiguous, i.e. all the subdivisions off of Haynes Drive were used to haul things in. What we were specifically trying to avoid is the intentional bypass of Memorial and Thompson Lane as good sufficient state routes to use that as a shortcut for that type of traffic that was somewhat incompatible with the type of traffic that we'd like to have in those type areas.
Yeah, I travel on Haynes Drive every day and it just depends, if you're not on Haynes at a certain time, it's almost impossible to get in the flow of traffic. I understand that. I guess I'm totally confused and you'll have to bear with me a second, guys. I understand that when this originally came up, it was a done deal, we voted to do this project.
We, we voted to pay for the design.
Right.
Didn't fund the project.
And then I'm seeing in our minutes here, in the agenda, that based on the meeting that we had with the residents, that the majority of them are saying that they do want this project. Am I misreading this?
Of the comment cards that you're, and actually, none of the people are, are on the comment cards who are affected by taking property. If I'm, I'm reading those comment cards, the 702, the 70, those addresses that are on the, the property taking, I don't, I don't believe they left comment cards. I don't, still don't have 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 identified, but I'm assuming that it's the property next to 715 and the property at 708 and maybe 712. I don't know about 2503 Regency Park. I, I don't know where the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 properties are.
I can, I can point that out to you if you'd like.
You've got a big chart here, can you just give us the street address? Or say it's Regency Park at Haynes, that corner, 2503?
The Smith property is, is at the corner.
There's just no addresses anywhere where I can see.
The, the Smith property is at the, is at the south, west corner there at Sulphur Springs and Haynes Drive.
It's 721.
That's 721.
And I apologize, sir, I don't have them by address, but I can, I still, I have.
See, it's south. East corner. I know one of them is the Odd Shake property at 715, I believe.
The, the Smith property is actually just to the left.
Is it 721?
Sulphur Springs, it's just to the left on the other side.
Okay, that's the Smith property.
Yes.
All right. That's one?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Hancock's property is 721.
721, that's three.
That's, that's number two.
Number two, okay.
Ms. Adams' property is number three and that is.
712.
712.
All right.
The Williams' property is number four and that's 708.
All right, that's, okay.
And then.
Merritt's.
The Merritt's property is number five and that's at 2503.
All right. So in essence, those are the five property owners that are most affected, otherwise all we're going to do is pave, is that correct?
Are, do work inside the existing right-of-way, yes.
Okay, but the only major improvement is a turn lane at Regency Park and Haynes, is that correct?
You're correct, you're correct, sir.
And we're going to grind the road down from Wiltshire to Memorial, is that correct?
We'll probably actually, mostly that's a ditch, a ditch section, so we'll probably, we'll do a little bit of milling, but we'll try to, try to level it up. Some sections are of such poor condition, probably add some pavement and try to level it up and then, and then surface everything.
What about adjusting manhole covers and, and water valve boxes?
Uh, yes, they will be, matter of fact, some of them are, I think are still a little high, are, are high now, so we'll, those will be adjusted accordingly to be flush with the, with the asphalt.
So these properties that we have identified, the five we just went over, these properties will have, will lose some of their property, right?
Uh, yes, there's, and primarily.
List in there that shows exactly what they will lose.
So is that what they're opposing, are these five residents, they're opposing this?
There's no comments from them.
No.
Only the point that I made, I don't know whether they are for it against it, but one of them has said, I think they were for it, but that was, I don't think there's anybody on those addresses on our comments. That's what my.
Mayor, I, I, I did the same as you, I kind of scanned through the, the comments to see. I know I, Mr. Merritt was at the.
Mr. Merritt is the only one and he says, I agree with improvements as outlined at this meeting, it is a solution to major problem of traffic flow, so he is the only, he is on that list of comments.
Mr. Griffin, you met with the property owners.
Uh, we've, we've had conversations with all. Uh, we've, we've had conversations with all, with, with several of them, I can't say a hundred percent, uh, but, but we have, uh, I, I know Mr. Hancock, uh, who owns actually two properties through there, um, uh, i- is, is for the project, feels like something needs to be done, and he's, um, let me get you the address, he is at, he owns rental properties at seven twenty-one and seven fifteen. Uh, and, and one other, uh, we'd mentioned, uh, Mr. Rhodes, Tony Rhodes, was at the, uh, at the meeting also, um, he owns, looks like maybe four properties through the, uh, proposed improvement area, and he was listed as being for the project, uh, also.
He doesn't live there, he just owns those properties.
Yes.
Same with Mr. Hancock.
So to your understanding, then, the opposed residents, whether they opposing the, the entire project or part of it, I'm still, what are they, what are they opposing?
I think for the most part, uh, they're, they're opposed to improving.
Yes, yeah, I, I brought that up, I said if we can maybe do a win-win, I see this letter indicating that they would go along with everything but the turning lane on the Regency, and that's why I was asking about a win-win situation for the time being, if we could do everything but the turn lane.
But I think we're acquiring the property at twenty-five oh three for the purpose of putting the turn lane in.
And that's Mr. Merritt, who is agree.
Who's, who's favor of the project.
So the, the people who are gonna be mostly affected by this, and also my understanding and reading of our agenda, the majority of the residents are for this, am I correct?
Uh, the majority of the residents that filled out, uh, comment cards, we, i- it's hard to, uh.
I mean, based on, uh, what we have here and the people who attended the meeting, based on our findings here, and here again, the people that are gonna be affected mostly by this are for the project. It's what I'm reading.
Yes, the, the ones that I, matter of fact, I actually spoke, uh, the Smith property, uh, is where the, uh, the mother and, and child was, was, uh, killed in the, uh, Good Friday tornado. Uh, I, I've actually spoke with, uh, they've just, they've, someone's purchased that property from a speculative standpoint, uh, didn't really indicate to me that they, uh, they had a problem, or was either for or against the project, I actually spoke with them, uh, today. Um, but, but to answer your question, yes, of the ones that, uh, the majority of the feedback that I've, I've received as far as in written form, um, a lot of the project, a lot of the, uh, or, or most of the folks that, that live in the, uh, the area are for the project.
But just to clarify that, there were fifty-three people or so that checked in at the neighborhood meeting, we got comment cards from eighteen.
That's correct.
So that leaves thirty-four that we didn't.
Thirty-five, yes.
Thirty-five that we didn't get comment cards from.
Yes, sir.
The, the feeling, the rest of the, did you get any sense from the ones, from the crowd itself?
Yeah, it's, it's difficult to, uh, unless someone actually fills out a, a card and, and leaves information for us, uh, which we ask the, uh, the attendees to, to do, it's really, um, you know, I, I can obviously look through the, uh, the names of the people who, who commented, I know ma- at least one or two of those that I've heard from since, uh, that were against the project, um, but there's also several that were for the project that, that didn't fill out a comment card, so it's really hard to, to gauge, uh, so that's the reason why we rely so heavily on those comments, getting those back, uh, so we can get some sort of feel for it.
And we had made the point during the, the, uh, meeting, uh, Mr. Gilli, staff doesn't wanna be in the position to have to try to represent what everybody in the room was saying, there were clearly people in the room who were for the project, there were clearly people in the room who were against the project. We encourage them to fill out the comment cards so that their comments could come to you unfiltered verbatim, um, and some residents did choose to, you know, take advantage of the comment cards, some others didn't, there were some for, there were some against. I think, you know, what we wanted to try to do was share with you the fact that we did try to, um, reach out to the community, advise them what the proposed project might look like, uh, see what input they might want to provide, uh, but also provide the mayor and the council with the accident about the crash data and some of the safety concerns that we've identified.
One more thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Just wanna be clear in my mind, of these fifty-three people that attended, and I was also at the meeting, and we solicited, uh, comments, what do you want, what don't you want, we just had eighteen people to respond to that, and of the eighteen people, the majority are for the project, is that correct?
That's correct.
But I would say that we have to put something in, in context, and I, I'm reading the comments, I exactly see what you're talking about, but how many residents do we have that are in this Haynes Drive area? I mean, what, just a ballpark figure, how many rooftops do we have that are in that, that area?
Uh, a- as far as the, the greater area, as far as Regency Park and everything, you're up into the thousands easily, uh, and, and probably several thousands, uh, as far as, obviously ninety-three hundred cars travel through there, but it's, uh, it's pretty easy to see just the number of lots, uh, number of subdivisions that, uh, that are there. Um, uh, some live on Haynes Drive, and then a lot just rely on it, uh, for their, their travel to and from, uh, work.
I think it's interesting to point out, and I, I, I will point out that we talk a lot about council members living in areas and districts and all that kind of stuff, but it's interesting to point out that four of, of this, of this body actually live within just a few blocks of the city section. I'm one of them, well, it makes five.
And many members of the council was at the, uh, the public meeting, and we, we greatly appreciate y'all, your, your attending and your input at, at the meeting.
Yeah, that's what, another thing I was a little confused about, because I did attend the meeting, and before the end, I think the question was asked about, do you all want this, and a young man got up and did not want it, and the place exploded, uh, for that, and, um, I'm a little shocked, because I, I like to deal with numbers, I'm a numbers person, and just of the fifty-three that signed in, and twenty percent chose not to sign in, that, um, majority of the ones that did sign in and turn in cards are for the project, and I was a little confused, that's why I was confused, because I was there when the place exploded, uh, so.
That's not uncommon, uh, I, I think, uh, I think a lot of times, the, uh, the opposition is a lot more vocal at those type of, uh, those type of meetings, um, a- almost immediately after we stopped the question and answer session, I had two or three people come up to me, uh, literally within seconds of, after the question and answers session, and, and say that they were for, they were for the project, for what we were doing. So you almost get into, um, it's almost a crowd, uh, uh, pleaser to, to be against it and to, to be vocal, so it, that, that's the reason why we, we, a lot of people won't speak up, uh, against, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty in the group, but they will fill out a comment card and say that they're for something, uh, and so that's why we encourage, uh, the, the comment cards.
Okay, I understand, I'm just looking at the numbers and, um, I wanna be fair.
Again, I, I think the telling number is seven thousand, traffic movements three years ago and ninety-three hundred now, I mean, I, I just don't see how you can insist that we have been placed on notice, that we need to do something to Haynes. I appreciate the concern of those neighbors, not only those who live along Haynes, but those would be affected. I think it's important to hear and consider, uh, their wishes, but we hire a city staff to give us the best recommendation they have, we generally try to listen to it, and if we need to temper it one way or the other, we do so, but in the long run, when you've got ninety-three hundred people using that road, um, and I understand that there's fifty or seventy-five or a hundred houses along that road who absolutely don't want it touched, I understand that, it's, it's their road and their minds, but there's ninety-three hundred people who use that road, and I think they need to be considered also. Mr. Washington.
Ma'am, you know, really, we need to consider, this project impacts more than just the residents own Haynes Drive, it affects the entire, everything behind it, pretty much, and, and even now, to me, and I live on Trinity Drive, and I was on it today, uh, but it is a public road, we are charged to do the public's business, and, uh, uh, I, you know, I've listened to everything, gotten a few emails and, and, and phone calls, um, to me, it's just a plain old no-brainer, and the responsible thing to do is to, uh, move on with this, with this project, we knew it three or four years ago, Chris, myself, and Dana, went out to Dejarnet Lane, when those folks was really up in Aurora, in a house, Monica Jones' house, by the way, uh, about Dejarnet Lane. I've had a couple of them call me since the project's been completed, since we're on our own apology, it hasn't impacted me at all, as a matter of fact, it's made it a little better. The same thing will happen on Haynes Drive. You just have to have the courage to do it.
And Councilman Washington, I think Mr. Gilli and I were in a meeting on Dejarnet Lane also, we sat and, and listened to residents, um, and, and, you know, I, I was not very supportive of, of widening Dejarnet Lane to a five-lane road, but, but now, you know, with, with Pitterd and, um, and two, and a middle school that's coming along there, you know, I think you can, you can see now, with the traffic count of ninety-three hundred on Haynes Drive, that what the ca- traffic count on Dejarnet is, so, and, and that's the, the whole thing on Haynes Drive, and, and I'm very respectful of the neighbor, the neighbors have a lot of friends who live on Haynes Drive, and are very respectful of their privacy and, and, and what that they, they want to see on that road, which is nothing, um, but, but at the same time, you know, the Dejarnet people look at us and say, you widened our, our road to five lanes, and now you have it dead-ending into a two-lane road, so, you know, what's bigger about that? So, uh, I'm, you know, my, my mind's still, when you look at this road, and I ran from Bel Air Church to down Haynes Drive on Saturday, just, uh, two Saturdays ago, and wanted to get an idea of how it was to, to try to go down Haynes Drive, you know, there's no sidewalks, so you're running through people's yards, and, uh, the traffic on a Saturday is, is high, um, when you're, when you drive through and you look at sports com, and you see the ball tournaments, and you see all of the people that are congregating at the sports com, and all of those people, or the majority of those people come from those, that area, so.
Yeah, and also, there's a reason why those utilities are designed the way they are. That power circuit used to belong where we built it, Milton Select built it, sits farther than our light off the road, but it's there for a reason, because it was always anticipated, because that's what they were connected to, that something's gonna happen on Haynes Drive. Uh, so all of it's taken into consideration by utility people, including MED, and, uh, I hope to do, because they got some pad night transformers out there, that's sitting back enough to where they will be out of the way if you did something. I rode it today from Ridgestone Park Drive to Memorial, and from my little feeble looking eyes for one tree to be compromised, and it's on up towards Memorial Boulevard, so, uh, I don't know what the tree fact is, I didn't see it, so, uh.
I think it's always important to get the citizens' opinion on any and everything we do on the council, um, I respect that, I think it's very important, we are the voice for the people, I think the people's voice should be heard, and to me, no offense to you, Councilman, uh, Washington, but it's a big brainer for me, because, uh, it's a lot of things we have to look at, and it's a lot of things we have to respect as far as what the citizens want. I'm a number cruncher, I believe in the numbers, here again, I attended, I, I'm coming in on this, on the back end, I'm coming in through the back door, guys, on this project that's come up again, but, um, I respect the comments made by the people here, again, I attended that meeting, I'm a little shocked that not more than eighteen people responded, but of the eighteen people responded, the majority want this project, so, but I think it's very important that we always listen to the voice of the people.
Well, in respect to you, I didn't say anything about not listening to them, I heard them all, it's tested in, in my little humble opinion of my experience with what I do, and what I've been through with the utility companies and whatever, being on this council, as long as I have the planning and commission meetings, I was sitting on a whole lot of no meetings, and you, and, and you get, you get them, but just like Chris said, you're gonna get the applause, you're gonna get all of that, but in the end, you have to do your public service, it comes down to a real common sense, public evaluation, 'cause we serve the public. Nothing wrong with listening to folk, I listen to them all the time, just a mere day, but when I get to a certain conclusion, I'm done, and I sleep good at night.
Mr. Young, excuse me, I'm sorry.
I move, we approve the recommendations of City Engineer regarding the Haynes Drive improvements.
Set.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? If not, please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
No.
Ms. Gels Harris.
No.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
This time, thank you, Mr. Griffith, we'll consider for approval a renewal of the Certificate of Compliance for Frank L. Robinson and Evelyn J. Robinson at Murfreesboro Wine and Spirits, thirty-sixteen South Church Street.
Mayor, this is a renewal that's required every two years by the State of Tennessee, uh, these owners have been there for some period of time now, and, uh, they have met our background inspection, and, uh, suggest that you approve this.
All right, they evidently meet the, uh, Certificate of Compliance requirements, is there a motion that we approve?
So moved. Second.
All right, you have a motion, second, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
He stepped out.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
This time, we'll consider recommendations of the Community Development Director with regards to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program Transfer Property for fourteen-thirty-four Antebellum Drive, two thousand and three Bradyville Pike, two, and two-hundred-six Dill Lane. Mr. Callow, welcome.
Thank you, sir. We've completed our rehab projects at the subject addresses and are ready to transfer the properties. Per your action of December seventeenth, two thousand and nine, the house at, uh, fourteen-thirty-four Antebellum Drive is to be transferred to Domestic Violence Program Incorporated. Per your action of October twenty-second, two thousand and nine, excuse me, the house at, uh, two thousand and three Bradyville Pike is to be transferred to Greenhouse Ministries, and per your action of December seventeenth, two thousand and nine, the house at two oh six Dill Lane is to be transferred to Elijah House Ministries, and with your permission, we'll do so. All three houses were purchased as single-family residents, were rehabbed as single-family residents, and will be transferred as single-family residents. My department will be monitoring each agency and the residents of each home on a quarterly basis to ensure full compliance with all applicable rules, regulations, ordinances, et cetera. City will hold a deed of trust in the ten-year note, uh, for, uh, which is the affordability period for each property, the note will reflect as nearly as possible the city's investment of NSP funding for the property, the interest rate is zero percent, and there's no payment. At the end of ten years, the lien will be released, there will also be restrictive covenants requiring the agency to lease the property to NSP eligible per, uh, persons at rents not to exceed NSP-approved rental rates. The terms regarding tenants which you approved, May twenty-second, two thousand and ten, that was last week, will be incorporated into our restrictive covenant documents signed at closing before we transfer any of the properties. Uh, I'll be happy to take any questions, uh, Mr. Ives, uh, from the legal staff is here to help, and we also have a representative from each of the three agencies, should you have any questions for them.
And your recommendation is to what?
Is to authorize us to transfer these properties to the agencies.
Thank you. Mr. McFarland.
Will you talk?
We had talked, I guess, two or three weeks ago, I had, through an email that I had gotten, the property at two thousand and three Bradyville Pike, I think, and I think this is the right property. I had talked to Mr. Lyons, who in turn, we talked to planning staff, but it was in the newspaper that they were planning on...
A triplex.
A triplex with that property.
It is being transferred, it was rehabbed as a single-family residence. They know that should they wish to do anything with it other than a single-family residence, they're gonna have to go through the planning department, through the planning commission, and back through the council. So...
I think we've all gotten lots of research on the NSP program, and from this council member, I know that all the organizations that we deal with do a fantastic job, but from one council member's standpoint, that it is our intent, and my explicit intent, that these will be single-family residences, not multifamily residences.
From the very first, we've told them that if you have any plans other than, you have to take that up with other folks.
In following up that vein, Mr. Callow, the deed restrictions on this, or the restricted covenants in this neighborhood are much more stringent than in most neighborhoods. With these homes are much more stringent than the existing houses around there.
Absolutely.
All right, you have this recommendation to transfer, and it's noted that obviously any change in the properties will have to come back through, not only the council, but the planning staff and the planning department, with the recommendation one way or the other. Any, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. All right, you have a motion, second, authorize the transfer of these three properties to the listed agencies. Please call a roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
No.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
This time, are there any fear permit applications? Thank you, Mr. Callow.
Mayor, there's one tonight for a special event by Main Street of Murphysboro, Rutherford County, at two-five-five-three Pitts Lane.
All right, you have this fear permit application for you, it seems to meet requirements. Is there a motion that we accept?
May be approved. Sorry, excuse me.
Okay. So moved.
There's a motion and a second, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Are there any questions on the motion?
With passion.
If not, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
This time, are there any fear permit applications? Thank you, Mr. Callow.
Mayor, there's one tonight for a special event by Main Street of Murphysboro, Rutherford County, at two-five-five-three Pitts Lane.
All right, you have this fear permit application for you, it seems to meet requirements. Is there a motion that we accept?
May be approved. Sorry, excuse me.
Okay. So moved.
There's a motion and a second, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Are there any questions on the motion?
With passion.
If not, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
This time, are there any fear permit applications? Thank you, Mr. Callow.
Mayor, there's one tonight for a special event by Main Street of Murphysboro, Rutherford County, at two-five-five-three Pitts Lane.
All right, you have this fear permit application for you, it seems to meet requirements. Is there a motion that we accept?
May be approved. Sorry, excuse me.
Okay. So moved.
There's a motion and a second, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Are there any questions on the motion?
With passion.
If not, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
At this time, are there any other board or commission appointments to be made? Mr. Lyons, do you have any?
No, sir.
All right, is there any other business from the council or staff to come before the council?
Mayor, just one quick thing, the Murphysboro Half Marathon is almost over a thousand runners. And I think that the fee, the fee structure changed on June first, so they're still, as far as the early bird, so still time to register.
Many people possibly ensures that I will not have room to run this year.
We do appreciate you holding the starting pistol for us to begin.
I'm gonna hold it much further away from my ear than the last time I fired it off.
I'm more worried about Mr. Bratcher holding the weapon.
Yes, that's right. Let me bring up some other business. All of you are aware that we have had a budget review, two sessions, one held on May the nineteenth at four P.M., and the other, May the twenty-seventh, at four P.M. Both of those were advertised, and we held those and discussed the budget. At that time, we, I think, heard recommendations for amendments, that we eliminate the funding from an outside agency for the Rutherford County Rescue Squad, and move the dollars in that particular line item to our fire department training budget. We also, I think, had a consensus to reduce the administrative department to ten percent, or ten thousand dollars regarding the promotion of an assistant to the city manager, and remove that ten thousand dollar line item. So, at this time, so far, I see the elimination of the rescue squad, and that money moved, and I also see an additional ten thousand dollars available out of the budget from the administrative department. I'd like to know, based on those two actions, are there any other amendments to the proposed budget that we have from members of the council?
I got a question.
Mr. Washington.
Well, we've discussed it. Would you explain to me, we have a part-time employee that's working right now, probably. And we have a courier system also, and I wanted to know if there was a possibility of us revamping some tasks and responsibilities, expanding existing employees' responsibilities. And I didn't even know you had a courier, to be honest with you. And was there any way to fit that part-time employee back into our system, and expand the personnel roles that we already have? I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Okay. Mr. Washington, let me maybe take a half a step back and explain to you the three part-time positions that we have in the administration department. One is a part-time position, which in your budget is labeled as nighttime security. The gentleman who fills that position has done an outstanding job for the city.
That's the one.
He comes in, I believe, at four o'clock each day, cleans the building, cleans the restroom, locks up when we have night meetings. That is a position that we have recommended not be funded, because we believe those duties can be handled by the full-time maintenance staff at the city hall. We have three individuals that work full-time, they come in at six in the morning, work into the afternoon, and through some adjustment of their schedules, we think the workload handled by that part-time employee can be adequately handled by our existing full-time staff.
So, I assume you have some stack of schedules, I guess?
Correct. We would adjust one of our employees who might, you know, come to work at twelve or two o'clock, we'd still have to work through that detail. That would then cover those evening hours, when the planning commission meets, when city council meets, and lock the building up. We already have a maintenance crew coming in at six o'clock in the morning before the building is occupied. That gives them an opportunity to clean, vacuum, and do, you know, some of the cleaning duties that can be disruptive while you've got employees in the workspace. To do it again in the evening, we didn't think that, we thought we could handle it with those existing full-time employees. Mr. Washington, you also asked about the couriers. I believe for the last two years, we have had a part-time courier that works in the morning, and a second part-time courier that works in the afternoon. Their responsibilities are to pick up the mail, to transfer inter-office mail from one department to the next, to make deposits, to pick up documents, to deliver the council agenda. In the past, for instance, we had council agendas delivered by police officers. We would use our maintenance staff to deliver packets. And then, at any given time during a workday, we had employees from multiple city departments making deliveries, coming up to city hall to get the mail and to take mail back. So, we had multiple employees who would, you know, make more per hour than the part-time couriers, and after surveying staff, we felt like this was a much more efficient way to handle this. We'd have one employee in a city car who could go ahead and make deliveries. So, they're running, you know, to all the city buildings, you know, on a daily basis. They'll split that workload up between the morning and the afternoon, but it has been, in my opinion, been a very effective way for us to keep the employees in those city departments working, doing what we pay them to do, and to allow the couriers to focus on, you know, getting documents to and from, including going to the U.S. Post Office for us.
All right. All right, again, are there any other amendments? And I would like to talk about the current employee pay, and possibly suggest an alternative to the budget numbers that we've seen based on employee pay. I've asked Mr. Lyons to provide us with some information regarding pay raises, if, and I think we've seen something about that before. But number one, we know that our employee healthcare cost portion to each one of our employees is gonna go up. So, we've got the possible fact that some of our employees not only won't get a raise, they'll actually see more of their pay going toward healthcare costs. I think we may have some information on that, but I'm asking Mr. Crumley now to pass out some information regarding potential scenarios regarding employee pay, and I'd like for you to kind of look at those. The second page of that shows you a kind of a graph, color chart, if you would. And on that color chart, underestimated cost is a summary. And one of the suggestions that I make to you is that we offer a bonus, a one-time bonus of seven hundred and fifty dollars to each employee, and I give you the cost of each one of those in dollars. I don't know whether you have a chart on overhead?
I don't have it on an overhead. I guess, Mayor, I could get that on the screen here pretty quickly. Maybe if I could just, quick point of explanation, just so you can kind of put in the context of the information that we passed out to you that you had directed me to put together. The first is to, you know, put it in the context of the health insurance increase. The city, as you know, offers two different insurance plans, one with United Healthcare, one with Blue Cross Blue Shield. We also have some employees who are on family coverage, and others who are on single-employee coverage. So, the range of increase on the employee's share of the health insurance on an annual basis will go up somewhere between seventy-eight dollars and sixty-five cents for the rest of the budget year, to four hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-four cents in a budget year. So, that gives you a sense of the impact on the employee take-home pay for fiscal year eleven. When we talk about adjustments to employee pay, I want to make sure we peel through all the details that go along with that, so as you can understand the memo that's before you. The first category, when it says all employees, that would include all existing active, full-time employees. It would also include full-time employees who have not completed one year of complete service following their initial hire date of promotion. As you know, standard city policy is that a new hire or promoted employee must serve one full year before being eligible for their first step increase on the subsequent July first. The second category on your chart is gonna be step-eligible and topped-out. This cost will include active, full-time employees, and employees who are currently at the top step of their range, in other words, called topped-out. For example, under our pay plan, an employee who is at step nine has reached maximum pay and is not eligible for a step increase since there is no step ten. The city has occasionally funded a discretionary cost of living increase for topped-out employees in prior budget years. This cost estimate excludes promoted employees or new hires who are not eligible for step increases. The final category there, the step-eligible, this would include active, full-time employees who are eligible for a step increase according to the standard city policy. It does not include topped-out employees or new hires or promotions. If the standard step increase was granted in the budget, this would be the category of employees who would have received a step increase. Lastly, the one, two, and three-and-a-half percent step increases, these were the costs that were previously shared with you. I put it on this chart, just so you would have all the information on one sheet of paper. Mayor, if it's helpful, I can try to get the bar graph on the screen if that...
I don't know whether you can pin it to that chart that's over there, and then have the camera kind of zoom in on it.
Put it on the overhead.
Okay, you've got the overhead there. Just that bottom portion, essentially the lines in the middle, if you can make them as big as possible, it shows the seven hundred and fifty to five hundred. Yep, and then drop all that down.
There you go.
Mr. Lyons, I don't have my budget handy, but what's our total, as a city, our total Nothing like being on the hot seat.
Sixty-five, seven percent.
This is not including benefits, just...
And all the...
Yeah, I'm just figuring.
About thirty-eight million dollars?
Yeah, because you can take the one percent, multiply it times a hundred that you got there, and you get roughly where you're going.
So, if we have thirty-eight million, thirty-eight million dollars of payroll, and we have, based on this, seven hundred and seventy-seven employees, then that would mean... This is roughly, if you were average out, this is about a two percent. If we did the seven hundred and fifty dollar bonus, we're talking about a two percent increase on the average. For some people, this would be a...
For those at the front end of the pay scale, this would be getting close to the standard step increase, and then its, you know, pay would increase, it would become a decrease in percentage.
Let me point out, one, you've got a memorandum like this from Mr. Godwin, and if you look on the second page, over on the right side, the net monthly, if you added a three-and-a-half percent step increase, it's that first highlighted column going right, it says a hundred and thirty-five dollars to an employee making forty-six thousand dollars a year, and a hundred and twenty-two dollars a month to an employee making forty-two thousand dollars a year. So, if you have that, that number then ends up being about sixty dollars a month, which is seven hundred and twenty dollars for an employee making forty-two thousand dollars a year.
It's a three-and-a-half.
But this is three-and-a-half, but if you have that number, then it's a one-point seven-five. It's almost a two percent, not quite, so it's less than two percent.
Okay.
The reason that I suggest looking at these numbers is I think that gives you an idea of the amount of money that we would add possibly to what we're taking from fund balance to fund either a seven hundred and fifty dollar one-time bonus, a five hundred dollar one-time bonus, or a one percent step raise. And I caution you, if you take a one percent step raise, you have added that to the salaries in perpetuity. That amount then goes forward, it's not just paid this year, it would be paid this year, next year, next year, next year, next year. Same thing with that two percent, or the same with the three-point-five. My recommendation to you would be to look at the seven hundred and fifty dollar one-time bonus. Number one, it would affect our lowest-paid employees greater than anyone else, so it's...
They receive the most benefit.
They would get the most benefit.
Exactly.
Number two, it would offset the increase in the healthcare cost that they're gonna assume because of the higher premium for eleven months out of the next twelve months after the budget starts. I think we get one month at the old rate, so that's why I would recommend a one-time bonus. And I would suggest that certainly those people that are either running out their benefits on the city's payroll, we've had several people retire in the last few years, not receive that bonus. I would also suggest that we pay those current employees only, and that we determine a time to pay that bonus, and I would suggest that we wait possibly till October the first to pay it. That would give us time to get through the budget changeover, that would give us time to get our new insurance rates in place, and it would give our personnel folks time to get our payroll in order, so we don't just jump off a cliff here in three weeks and write an extra check, and not, and there may be some other things that staff would like to bring up. But I just make that suggestion to you. And I'd like to have comments and talk about this method of rewarding our employees for their work and how to pay for it. Mr. Gilli.
I tend to agree with everything you said. Mr. Lyons and I had a similar conversation earlier in the week about... Mr. Lyons and I had a similar conversation earlier in the week about this approach. It's never, to me financially, responsible to use non-recurring dollars to pay for recurring expenses, which is what would be the case if we actually gave percentage step increases because it would carry on. But when we talked, Mr. Lyons and I the other day, would it be a huge problem for a huge strain on the city's economy to do it as a one-time bonus and then still perhaps in February, look, as we talked about earlier, how the forecast for next year's going to be? And I think that employees, we all agree that they deserve some relief with the health insurance costs going up, and I think the suggestion you're making is the most appropriate thing that we could do, while concerned.
Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I agree with what you're recommending, and I would assume, what would you recommend this money, we pay for this money out of the...
Fund balance.
Fund balance, okay. I think it's just the fairest way to do it, and I like the way that, I think it's a lot more fairer than doing the percentage raise. Percentage raise would be, it would be detrimental to those employees on the lower end of the scale. This way, everyone gets the same amount, and all those on the top obviously would get the percentage raise, they would get the same as everyone. So I like this approach a lot better than I would any of the percentage raises.
Other questions or comments?
Mayor, I would still encourage the city manager in February to, that will give us time to reevaluate where we are in our sales tax monies, to continue step raises, general raises, and category raises. I think we will be reviewing that between now and then, so this is a first step, this is not a stop step, this is a first step.
Correct. Mayor, Ms. Wright had just reminded me, you know, we have our budget public hearing next Thursday night, we've advertised that. What we advertised was your, the proposed budget that was handed to you several weeks ago. So the suggestion would be that instead of making a formal amendment to the budget right now, what we'll want to do is get direction from you about what you're going to want to do, because once you have your budget public hearing, you know, the next item on the agenda is going to be your appropriation ordinance and your tax rate ordinance. So if we get a sense for what direction you want to go, we will begin preparing the spreadsheets that we can incorporate into that document. So in other words, what I'm suggesting is we would not want to make a formal motion because that would potentially mess up our legal ad.
The same actually holds true for the other proposed amendments that we had. I don't think the transfer of the rescue squad money, nor the administrative position consideration, those are proposed amendments to be dealt with next week, and this would follow in suit with those.
Yes, sir. We want to, you know, we will make all the calculations and get all the numbers up to date for your appropriation ordinance, but the public may have other changes that would be made that we will need to incorporate by the time we get to third and final reading. So we want to make sure we understand the direction you want to go so we can prepare the calculations.
But by discussing this tonight, it lets you know, as staff, what direction we want to go, and it also puts our entire employee base on notice of what we're looking at and gives them, not necessarily some expectations, but at the same time gives them some direction as to where we're hoping as a council to go.
Yes, sir.
I also have spoken with Mr. Lyons, and I think this is good. I think the employees will, you know, appreciate this, and I do want us to look at, you know, like we said, once the sales tax and everything comes in after Christmas, we'll look at possibly other increases. One question, you know, I'm always have a question being a new one. The reserve fund, is that what we call the...
Fund balance.
Fund balance.
You mentioned that the staff that provided a memorandum on May 27th to the council, and the last page of that shows you the general fund available cash balances for a one-year period. It shows you by each month, kind of how we use that money to avoid borrowing other monies, saving our taxpayers' money. So I just refer that to you for your information, if you want to see that. That was under budget information, May 27th.
But that figure goes up and down.
Right, it certainly does.
I don't want people to think, it stays just like that. It fluctuates, it goes up and down.
And I had a meeting this afternoon with the city's financial advisor and started to talk to them about dates in July for a workshop on the financial policies, including a discussion on fund balance and how we budget and how we deal with our investments. And I think the second week of July was a date that the financial advisor had available, and I will be memoing you in the next day or two to try to check your calendars, but we were already talking to them about dates to get some direction about how we're going to define this and the policies and procedures we want to suggest to you.
And something that we have talked about in length, that although we say fund balance, we're not talking about cash, I mean, we're really talking about assets minus liabilities. I mean, we're talking about equity. So, you know, there are a lot of companies out there that have a great-looking balance sheet but don't have cash, and I think that's something as a council that we have to be cognizant about, that we can have a great-looking fund balance, but, you know, we have to have cash to operate the city and all that sort of money we can get our hands on.
Absolutely. And I assume that if we would have some catastrophic, something unforeseen happen, that's where you would get that those going from, and if it was a fematopid incident, they only reimbursed 75%.
Correct. It's a very complicated subject and one that is not very intuitive, and that's why we want to take the time in a workshop fashion with someone who works in the financial market, who advises, you know, that right now they're having a similar conversation with the city of Louisville, I believe they work with the city of Franklin, so they're going to have a perspective of working with a number of elected bodies and understanding as they talk to the rating agencies about what good financial management is. When the city went to the bond market last year, we got excellent ratings. I think we've got a very good track record about being very well managed financially, and we want to continue that. And that's why we want to be judicious in the use of fund balance, and we want to be careful with it, but I certainly, from the very get-go, have said that pay for our employees is absolutely a priority. We have outstanding employees, they dedicate their careers and service to this community, and we are all very much wanting to support that. So I appreciate the support that you're extending in this conversation.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to make one comment, and I made it earlier. Mayor, this is, I think this is the 23rd budget that I've had an opportunity to participate in. I know this, the mayor and councils in the past, and included this council, has always been generous. When times are good, we've been generous about giving our employees what we feel like is a fair raise, fair salary, fair benefits. We've given them good equipment to work with, we've provided them with the most safest and most up-to-date technology that we can provide them. And I think the majority of our employees will acknowledge that, and they have done that. I think the majority of our employees also realize that the economy of our country and the economy of our city has been suffered, our residents have suffered unemployment, like we mentioned, it's over 10%. There's probably another, probably 10% or so that's underemployed, there's another segment of that that's not even on the books that are, they don't even register in the numbers. I think they understand that people losing their homes, and this budget has no property tax increase to our residents. So I think if we can do this, I think it will, it will let our employees know and our citizens know that we're doing all we can do to manage their money in the most efficient, prudent way that we can, and plus give our employees some increase in their salary. So I think this would be, this is going to go a long way, and I hope to let our employees and our residents know what we're trying to do up here. And I appreciate the hard work that, Mayor, that you and the staff have done to make this possible.
All right, you have before you a summary of kind of these estimated costs, and I would like to point out that all employees would include all existing active full-time employees. It would also include full-time employees who have not completed one complete year of service following their initial hire promotion. Most of our employees who are hired are not eligible for any raise unless promoted, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
In their first full year...
Yes, sir.
Until the next budget year following the first full...
Hidden on hire date, it could be more than 12 months.
So if we had a public safety officer who was hired in the middle of the year and has not completed a year, they would not receive this one-time bonus, because, number one, they're not eligible for a raise. The other step-eligible and topped out is a number that is about $51,000 greater than if we just did the step-eligible only. I would like to get some sense from the council, after you review this, in writing to the city manager, of which one of those categories you would like to pay if you would want to pay a one-time bonus. I'm not asking you to do it tonight, but I'm asking you to, I'm seeing a little concern from our city attorney.
Mayor, I was just trying to make sure that what you said was what this said, as relative to probationary employees, as to what the intent was. I thought you to say it would not include probationary employees, and from Mr. Lyons' text, I thought that it would, so I just wanted to make sure we were...
My proposal would show that all employees would be included, as he's explained, or that step-eligible and topped out were included only, or that step-eligible only were included, as is explained here. I'm trying to get some sense from the council members of how they would like to pay this bonus.
Do you want us to talk about that tonight, or you want to...
It's fine to talk about it, I'd like to get some sense so they can prepare a document.
Just personally, I mean, and just looking at this, I think it would be prudent just to do all employees. Category number one that this list is.
That's the 777?
Correct. That's my, that would be my...
If you do that, you're including the city manager, you're including the assistant city manager.
Including all, including all employees.
They're currently not eligible for a raise, is what I'm saying.
Including everyone. 777.
And 777, as my understanding, includes vacant but to be hired positions in next year's budget. So if we hire a, I don't know that we can get it done, but an assistant personnel director before this raise goes into effect, that person would also receive that $750 bonus.
Mayor, I believe when Ms. Tucker calculated this, she only calculated it on positions that have a, somebody actually walking around doing that job right now.
And that would be...
777 represents our actual people, not physicians.
Correct. But we are a dynamic organization, and sure as we're sitting here, somebody will come to work on August the 1st, and if you made the payment on October the 1st, then I want to make, these are why we wanted to have these conversations, because it sounds simple to say, let's provide an increase, and we want to get some definition, so we've got clarity.
Then would you consider all employees on the payroll at the end of this year?
That would be the 777.
No, 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 I think, I think what we're looking at, and I don't mean if it was in your mouth, Vice Mayor, but it's all active employees as the date that we approve this, but the payment would not be made until a date certain in the future. The ones hired between when it's approved and the date payments due would not get the benefit.
Yeah, that's exactly what, that's what the 777 number is.
You might want to do, rather than date of approval, you know, June 30th.
July 1st.
Okay.
Did the new budget...
Yeah.
July 1st.
Yep, yeah, as of July 1st.
We would certainly accept any recommendation if you figure out something in the next week that would hinder or make that objective or goal difficult. Correct, I don't want to make it confusing. I just want everybody to understand where we're going if we do that.
But the number that we, when we're talking about 777, we're not talking about people who are on the city's, this is not including people who've retired, who are still using out, this is just people who are working with the city.
Currently.
Currently actively employed.
And the difference between, you know, the step-eligible, both of those, and the all employees is, you know, an employee who has been hired, has not waited one full year of service to catch the next July 1st. That is our standard practice for a step increase. So I want to make sure we understood the different ways this could be approached, have all the information.
Are we saying we're not, those are working as of July 1st?
Yeah.
Not, and excluding those who have retired but are still on the payroll, they're not included.
They are not included.
All right, then we have a sense that that's what we want to do? Any objection? I hear none. And that's what I'm suggesting that you provide to us...
Yes, sir.
...as part of the budget document that we will review...
Yes, sir.
...next week. Then the second thing that I would bring to your attention as an amendment is, we do have a certain number of employees that we have been recommended to lay off. There are seven in solid waste, two in building and codes, one in planning, there are three time, three part-time positions, one administrative, and two at the convenience center, and there's one judicial secretary position, which is currently vacant, and that is part of the layoff number, so to speak. The total salaries involved in that means that there's $414,000 in salaries that are not included in the current budget for those individuals, and there's also $70,000 in fuel savings for going to a four-day work week at solid waste to accomplish what we have been presented as opposed to a five-day work week. So there's almost $500,000 that is not in this budget now to accomplish those layoffs and the lesser fuel costs. So if there's any discussion regarding those layoffs proposed, what you would like to do regarding that in the budget document that we're going to be seeing, I'd like to hear those now. Vice Mayor.
One question that comes to mind would be, regardless of the layoff, we could still do the four-day work week at the solid waste and have that savings, is that, would that be a fair statement?
No, let me, maybe just one thing that the mayor had said, that the $70,000 in fuel savings are going to be generated because the yard waste collection would not be done every week, it would be done every other week. That's where the fuel savings came from.
Not on the schedule.
But that's there regardless, that has, that's in itself separate from everything else?
The yard waste, the proposal for the layoffs in solid waste in large part is due to the adjustment in the yard waste collection going from typically weekly to typically bi-weekly.
Just yard, not solid waste.
Just yard waste.
So you'd have to have layoffs to have...
That's right. Otherwise, it's counterproductive because we're saving fuel costs in exchange for paying employees to not go to work.
Right.
In essence, would be the situation correct?
And we would be able to, with the adjustment and the four 10-hour days, be able to collect all of the residential garbage, the solid waste, without any new employees and without changing any households they have serviced.
Any questions or comments regarding the layoffs?
Would that be a wash on that four-day versus five-days, or is that...
Yes, sir, there'd be no extra costs.
Right, okay.
They're not collecting residential garbage on Wednesdays, and that's where the slack in the schedule would occur.
I did hear today from someone who thought we were going solid waste pickup once every two weeks, and I want to clear up, that is not what we're doing. We're going to yard waste pickup every two weeks.
Brushing lamb and so forth.
Lems, leaves.
Grass and...
Flippins.
Do we have any numbers?
Green creper, and I can tell you specifically.
Do we have any data that will give us how many stops that our yard waste people make on a, on a weekly basis?
Mr. McFarland, that changes time of year. It, you know, it depends on the weather. If you've got a nice weekend in the spring, you know, that the following week it's going to be pretty, pretty heavy. If it's really hot or raining on a weekend, there's not going to be much at all. I know as I go through the neighborhoods, I'll see yard waste here and there, but it is not every household every week at the curb. Based, you know, I didn't do a formal survey of what other communities do for yard waste, but as I began to ask, well, you know, what's this community doing, what's that community? The most frequent collection schedule I heard of was bi-weekly. It was not uncommon to hear monthly, I believe in Nashville, they may be quarterly. So we are already providing a very high level of service. The adjustment to go from one week, typically one week to typically two weeks still puts us, I believe, at the head of the class.
And a question that I was asked, the reason I was asking is, with, it's not, we don't have the option that we can say, we're going to work five weeks straight through this type of season and only two every other week, because we still have the same number of man-hours or to balance through. So we can't not employ people in the summer months and bring them in in the fall when we have fall of the leaves, so it's not a seasonal type of position.
We're feeling, you know, that, those routes are run by full-time employees, yeah.
The only way that would ever work is if we did that as a contract labor basis with the understanding that we're hiring company X at certain times of the year peak and not at others, but that doesn't, it doesn't work that way when you're talking about regular... But that doesn't, it doesn't work that way when you're talking about regular city employees.
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
So we're saying that we've looked at all avenues when it comes to laying off these 14 people? I mean, we looked at absolutely all avenues.
I think the overriding reason is that we feel like we can fulfill the same workload in the coming year with this many fewer employees.
I just, I, I just can't. We're still talking about, and I know the economy is bad, we're still talking about the livelihood, and we're not talking about 14 people. We could be talking about 100 people. I've had people call me, they work in the city, if I lose my job, I'm the only one working, I have children. I mean, have we looked at all avenues to keep these people? I realize what we're saying, but I'm talking about looking at all avenues. Now, the 14 people that we are letting go, what's the effect of that on that?
In the proposed budget, what we have suggested would be that on July 1, the position would no longer be funded. It might be a good time, Mayor, if I could, to talk a little bit about the proposed severance package because I know that's something that's, would be very important as a transition if this would take effect. What we've proposed as a severance package is that the city, their last day of work would be June the 30th, that the city would then pay two months of pay to the employee to help give them some sort of transition. Additionally, we've included money in the budget that would provide a company to come in and help assist the employees get what life has in store for them next, job-wise. So what we'll do is bring a firm in, where they'll sit down and they'll provide some counseling with them. They'll do some work helping them in how to properly fill out a job application or resume. They'll give them some interviewing tips. It's actually, I think, two days. Mr. Godwin, I'm going to ask him to come up in just a second if it's okay with you to talk a little bit more about this because I think he's worked with this firm hands-on. But we would do that before June 30th. We'd actually bring this firm in during the work, before June 30th, so that they could come into the workplace on work, work time and help talk to our employees about, you know, how do we transition from where we're at now and look toward the future. Mr. Godwin, if you could.
Let me ask a question. How much are we going, how much are we paying this firm that we're bringing in here?
I believe we budgeted $7,500.
So we're talking about, first of all, these people don't, they don't know who they are. And we're talking about three weeks or less, and these people are going to lose their job in two months' pay. I, I just, I just cannot see that. Now, and I, and I know, and I'm for, I've talked to people in the city, I'm for everyone getting this raise, but we're raising people and then we're cutting off people and not even giving them a month's notice, and we're talking about the livelihoods of people, their families. Two months. Now, if we look, if we've looked at all avenues in laying off these people, can we at least carry them to the first of the year? I mean, what's two months when you're going to get a pink slip tomorrow that you're losing your job? I just, I'm having a big problem with this. And we're coming up with the money, and I feel like our employees need a raise, but we're coming up with this money. I'm, I'm having a problem with this.
Well, you know, I think, you know, I agree, and I think everybody on this council probably has wrestled with this, Ms. Harris, and we've all had sleepless nights. I think anyone else up here wants to see anyone lose a, lose their position or their job. But, you know, it's not unlike the business community in Murfreesboro has to face every single day. When business is up, they hire employees, and when business is down, they have to adjust and they have to make those painful adjustments. I'm sure State Farm and any other industry in our city does the same thing. It's difficult. None of us want to do that. But I think we're charged with the responsibility of running this city like we would run any business. You know, government just can't just grow and keep on adding people, then when times get bad, just say, well, we've grown, we're going to leave it the way it is, no matter what the cost is to our public. We have to be business-minded and prudent enough to look at things and say, if business is down 50%, you know, we have to adjust. We have to be willing to be fluid enough to adjust. I know it's painful. That's not the part that we all bought into. We all like to sit, you know, I like to sit up here and give raises and pat people on the back and smile and say, hey, life is wonderful and everybody's happy and everything's hunky-dory in the city. But sometimes it ain't like that. Sometimes our decisions and our jobs are difficult. We hold the decisions in our hands of people's jobs, their livelihoods, and when we're giving those jobs out, everything's fun. Sometimes in the, in the, in the history, we have to, we have to adjust, and it's not fun. I don't like doing it. And I hope, I wish we could, I hope we can find a way not to do it, but sometimes we have to make those tough, difficult decisions.
Can our budget stand more than two months?
That would be an adjustment that could be, you know, the two-month figure is certainly something that would be at the council's discretion.
Mr. Lyons, if we push that out to a third month, is that, what kind of impact would that have? Because 30 days can be a lifetime if you're looking at trying to find other employment.
I don't.
Is that possible?
That, we can calculate what that, that would be.
Any other questions, comments?
I just got one comment, Mayor.
Mr. McFarland?
I don't, talking to city manager, I think he brought a good comment to us that, and I respect this, as we said, we are not involved in the day-to-day operations of running departments. That's why we rely on our department heads. If our department heads tell us that my, our business and our workload's down 50%, then I have people in my staff that do not have work, then we have gone through trying to move those in other departments in the city. And having this conversation with Mr. Lyons, Mr. Lyons said, you know, we came to you when times were good, asking you to staff up employees, and we granted that. And I can't come to you at the same time when times are bad and we don't, and we, we would love to keep the staff, but we don't have the work. How can I have credibility when I'm, you can't play it both ways. So, you know, you, you have the residents who we have to be accountable to their taxpayer dollars. You know, we're, we answer to our employees, but the number one person that we answer to is our residents in Murfreesboro. We're spending their tax dollars. I don't want to lay anyone off. But at the same time, we have to make, when you hear everyone tell us that we have to run government like a business, and how can we make common sense decisions and employ more people than what we need to do the job? And, you know, that's harsh. And I, and I don't, like I said, don't, you know, it's easy to put faces with those names, and I want to be able to do that. But at the same time, we take an oath that we're responsible for taxpayer dollars. And, you know, government cannot just employ people just to employ people. There's, there's a business that is in the private sector that employs, just employs, has one word, bankrupt. So we have to make sure that we stay on top of it. We don't know where this economy is going to head. You know, you look at what's happening nationally with the oil spill. We don't know how that's going to impact our, our local economy. We don't know how it's going to impact our national economy. So we have some tough decisions that we're going to have to make. And unfortunately, I think you, Mr. Lyons, you told me that 65, 70% of our expenditures that we can cut, they're employee and personnel expenditures. Ms. Harris, I am totally with you, but if you can find and you see where we can get more revenue, and it's something that we've missed, I'm, I'm all for. If we can find more revenue than if there's something we've missed, please bring it to us by next week. But I've looked over that budget, and I have not seen more revenue that we can get.
I think Mr.
Mr. Gilli, excuse me.
Go ahead.
I think Mr. Lyons has done a great job. We've had numerous meetings, and he knows that, because I've told him that. I'm just saying, if we have to lay off these people, we're talking about giving these people less than a 30-day, we're talking about a couple of weeks here. And I'm asking, if we have to do this, that we look again to see if we can extend their pay more than two months. You know, I, and I'm saying, just look at, you know.
That makes sense.
Just look at it. I mean, and let's put ourselves in these people's shoes. We're sitting here today, and if you go home and get a pink slip in the morning, and you have less than three weeks. I mean.
You get two, it's not much pay.
Right. But I think with the economy, and I've talked to several people in the city, some of these people I know are in the count to be laid off because I know where they work, and I know what the jobs they do. Let's look at giving them more if we have to lay off in two months. I would just like to see the numbers come back.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Gilli, I'm sorry.
Rob, if you'd like to go ahead.
Well, I can, with Ms. Harris, you know, that's reasonable. It is pretty quick. We all know that job market is a battle. I don't know who these, I know one of me, I made it a point not to try to get too involved with the other ones because I don't like it. I just don't, it's awful, you know. But on the other hand, Chris is correct, and all of the businesses and industries, they make adjustments all the time. Some of them walk, you don't give you a pink slip the day of, you don't come back the next day. So, but I do, but, but these people have been very dedicated to the city and, and are, we need to get a little more, a little more relief in what we're proposing. And I hope the rest of the council, Rob's going to bring back some numbers and everything, and I'll look over those. But, but that, to me, that's real reasonable because these are extraordinary times, sometimes you've got to do extraordinary things. These are very extraordinary times. And, you know, even in my place, you know, raises have been cut, we haven't filled a position in three years, I bet. Don't need them. To be honest with you, I was telling them, very contractually, I cannot lay off until something happens. Certain things have to happen. I've told my guys that if that were not in place, some of them may not be there today. And you can talk to EMD or any way or so. It's the nature of the business. Happens every day. Don't like it, don't want it, but the least we can do is try to take care of whoever those employees are as best we can for one and two months.
Mr. Gilli.
Thank you, Mayor. And I agree with those comments that if we can look at, being able to afford to give that, that extra month, I think that's very reasonable. But what I was going to say is, I agree with everything that Mr. McFarland said. We do have to look at this as a business, and we have to look at work need versus number of employees when we're looking, spending taxpayer dollars in that regard. The difference between looking at this versus the one-time bonus money we discussed earlier is the difference in recurring expenses being paid for out of non-recurring money in this situation. And that's just not fiscally responsible in any organization that you're in. It's not fiscally responsible to take from one group of employees to give to another. That's not appropriate in any business model that I've ever seen. But one thing that I would like to say when we talk about all avenues being looked at, anyone who has ever seen Mr. Lyons interact with the rest of the city employees knows that there has never been a boss who has had more respect from those that he works with than Rob does. And you get that kind of respect by earning that. And if there were other avenues to bring to us other than this, I can rest assured that he would have brought those to us.
Other comments?
He stole them from me. That's what I was going to say. And you've got to realize in business that the employee pay and benefits usually make up the bulk of your general fund budget, even in my place. And those funds are recurring. You can have a one-time payment of something like this little groupie, like consultants or whatever you're bringing in, that's done. They hand gone. You don't pay it anymore. Whereas the recurring expenses are the ones that you have to maintain, and in a lot of places, they average the inflation rate of somewhere around 6%. So while your revenue's going down, your operation cost's going up.
All right. Other questions or comments regarding the budget or any amendments? We're going to try to get some information to you about what that might cost, that from two months to three months.
Yes, sir.
Anything else the council would like to ask staff to do before next week's meeting? Anything at all regarding the budget? Is there any other business to come before the council, from the council or from the If not, you're adjourned.